All right, it's seven o'clock and I'm gonna welcome everybody to the September meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is John Schoenhorn, I'm the Chair, and I'm gonna ask the staff if they will call the roll so that we can begin the meeting.
Certainly. Carrie Callahan.
Here.
John Carrier.
Here.
Ron Llewellyn.
Here.
Sarah Nadine.
Yeah.
Rob Phillips. No Rob yet.
And for the record, he indicated he was joining remotely, is that correct?
He indicated he was going to join remote and not seeing him yet.
All right.
So. Uh, Rob Phillips, we got John Schoenhorn.
Here.
And then John Brockelman.
Here.
Harry Marsh. And Steve Walsh.
Here.
So I need, oh, all right, let me see if I can get Rob in.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, well, we have a quorum and at least let's start with the formal reading of the notice of tonight's meeting. I'll ask that Commissioner Callahan or Secretary read the notices of record.
Notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold an online and in-person hybrid public hearing on Monday, September 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Carrie Spose and Manuel Burgos, application for variance to locate accessory structure in other than required yard at 32 Ben Court R40 zone. Hallary Monirant, application for variance to reduce front yard setback from 50 to 25 feet for construction of new home at lot 8980 per n, lot 1, closed per n. Twin Ponds Road R40 zone per n adjacent to 4 Twin Ponds Road, closed per n. Con Edison Solutions, application for variance to reduce side yard setback from 50 feet to 31 feet for ground mounted solar array at 10 Mountain Lane R80 zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the Town of Farmington website at www.farmington- A copy of this proposal is available online at www-farmington-ct.org/government/zoningboardofappeals or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall, in Farmington, Connecticut, August 25, 2021.
Okay, and we're going to call these matters in the order in which the notice was given, and so the first matter is going to be Carrie Spose and Manuel Burgos, Burgos, application for variance to locate accessory structure. And because we are, we have all of the regular commissioners, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, so there will not be an appointment of an alternate for this first matter, and I'm gonna ask Shannon if you just do a little bit of explaining for the members, because this is an unusual situation, because the house, as I understand it, is in Plainville, and the request, the property, the side yard is in Farmington and therefore is subject to our zoning regulation. So could you just explain how that works interacting with the Town of Plainville and whether we heard anything from them?
Certainly, so up on the, on the monitor is the aerial view of 32 Ben Court, and you can see the property, the portion that is in Farmington, in this line coming straight diagonal through, the view on the aerial is the town line, Plainville to the south and Farmington to the north. And as part of our requirements, when there is a public hearing, we, as the town, are obligated to notify the Town of Plainville, which we did, and the documentation is in our files, we notified them in writing via certified mail. It's directed to the Clerk's Office and their Clerk's Office and shares it with their town staff. We have not received any comments from the Town of Plainville regarding this matter.
Okay, so would the applicant please come up to the podium? And please, when you come up, would you identify yourself for the record and your address, please? And if more than one person is speaking, you should both identify yourselves, please.
Manuel Burgos, 32 Ben Court, Plainville, Connecticut.
And Carrie Spose, 32 Ben Court, Plainville, Connecticut.
Okay, so we have your-
You can keep your masks off when you're presenting at the podium, because we're gonna wanna make sure, it's important that it gets picked up on the audio.
All right, so and then please speak into the micro, microphone for purposes of our record, so please go ahead.
Okay. So we are requesting this location variance due to the severe sloping of our yard elsewhere on our property. This is the flattest portion to be able to put the accessory structure. And also with the property being bound on three sides by a street, and the angle of the property line with our neighbors in Plainville, there is no room on the other side in Plainville to fit it. And again, with the sloping being very severe on the other side, and a tree stump, tree stump that would have to be ground out over there as well.
Right, um, is there any other, did you wanna add anything as part of the applicant, application?
Um, no, she really summed it up, I mean, the whole yard is, it's because of the-
You can take off your mask.
The whole house and the yard, because of where the location is, everything is all sloped, it's on a hill, I don't know what the mountain or hill is called with the two radio towers, just to give like a structural-
Pinnacle, I believe.
But there's no flat land there whatsoever, not until you get to Cook Street.
And we did get one letter from a neighbor saying that they don't oppose it, we didn't hear anything back from anybody else.
Right, has that letter been made part of the record?
No, I don't have a copy, did you bring a copy with you?
I did bring a copy.
Okay.
Would you please present it to staff, please, so that we can make that part of the record? And just for the record, what is the name of the neighbor that wrote the letter? Okay, yeah, all right.
September 19, 2021, to whom it may concern, we, Cassie and Catherine Cohtu, live at 46 Fawn Drive, Plainville, Connecticut. We are adjacent to the property at 32 Ben Court, Plainville, Connecticut. We are aware that there is a proposal to put a, they're referring to it as a dwelling on the property at 32 Ben Court. We have been advised of the type of dwelling on the location of the property it will sit on. At this time, we have no issue with the dwelling being put on the proposed plan. Thank you, Cassie and Catherine Cohtu. And just to confirm, it's a shed and not a dwelling.
Yes, nobody living in it.
Correct.
Okay.
And they are also the, the only people that are directly next to us, because we're bound by three sides.
Yeah.
So they're the house that's to the south.
So it's right there.
Yes.
Yes.
On the Plainville side, their whole property is in Plainville, right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Callahan.
No questions.
Commissioner Carrier.
No questions.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
No questions.
Commissioner Nad-
No questions.
Commissioner Phillips.
No questions.
Commissioner Brockelman.
No questions.
And Commissioner Marsh has not joined, correct?
Correct.
Well, we'll skip him for a moment while she's checking. Commissioner Walsh, do you have any questions?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions, I'll note, I did go out and do a site inspection this past weekend, and, correct me if I'm wrong, your, the backyard that goes up to, I guess that's Fawn Street, Fawn Drive, is particularly steep behind your home, is that correct?
Yes.
So the topography, if you were to follow our regulations, would actually require you to dig into the side of the hill to put a shed, if you wanted it horizontal, right?
Correct.
Correct. That whole, that whole portion would be actually on the Plainville border. When I did speak with the Town of Farmington, they said because of the location that we wanted it, it would fall on Farmington.
Sure. Yeah, I have no further questions. Is Commissioner Marsh on the-
No, sir.
Okay. All right, is anyone here wish to speak, we'll do it, first of all, does anyone wanna speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone online that's-
If there's anyone online wishing to speak regarding this application, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature to raise your hand, and you will be acknowledged to address the board.
And I'll say either in favor or opposed at this point, rather than separating it out.
And the only people on are, are us, and Todd, Todd logged on for IT, but that's it, there's no one, there's no public-
Okay, so, and I just wanna say, anyone in the audience who wants to speak opposed to this application, being nobody, I'm gonna close the public portion of the hearing and then we will go to vote. You may, please, you can have a seat, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion from a member of the commission.
I move to approve the application of Carrie Spose and Manuel Burgos for application, for, I'm sorry, for a variance to locate a, an accessory structure in other than the required yard at 32 Ben Court, which, as we have just learned, is in both Plainville and Farmington.
Rob Phillips, second.
All right, and that, and you know, this is in R40 zone, that's part of your, your application, your, your motion, correct?
I think it's an R8.
R40.
It's, and for Farmington, the portion that's in Farmington is R40.
Right. Okay, so, any discussion? We have a motion and a second, anyone wanna speak?
Would somebody like to at least articulate for our record in our minutes, the reason in, or- We made the motion based on the hardship created by the topography, primarily in the location of the lot, and the fact that it was bordered by public highways on all, on three sides.
Okay, anyone else wish to comment? I guess we can go in order, does anyone, I'll just go through. Commissioner Carrier, you wanna comment?
No, nothing further.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
No comment.
Commissioner Nadine.
No comment.
Commissioner Phillips.
No comment.
And I have nothing to add, I agree 100% with what Commissioner Callahan said in favor of his motion, so I'm just gonna now go to calling the question, and because we have some people are remote, I'm gonna ask Shannon if you will call the roll.
Okay, this is for the vote. Carrie Callahan.
Aye.
John Carrier.
Aye.
Ron Llewellyn.
Aye.
Sarah Nadine.
Aye.
Rob Phillips.
Aye.
And Sheriff Schoenhorn.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, your application has been approved, you need to now go to the Town Planning Office and they will tell you what needs to be done, paperwork has to be prepared, and good luck. Moving right along to the next matter, this is the Harrah Lee Monirat, application for variance to reduce front yard setback from 50 feet to 25 feet for construction on Twin Ponds Road, and I would ask that the applicant, whoever's representing the applicant, identify himself for the record and state your, both your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Robert Reeve, I'm a lawyer with Scully Nixon Reeve at 79 Main Street in Unionville. With me tonight is the applicant, Hallary Monirat, and Bill Aston is sitting in the front row, Bill's a professional engineer at Buck and Buck, and he prepared the sketch that's up on the screen right there in front of you right now. The certified mailings were made to the neighbors, and I sent those to Sandy last week. I put a sign on the property, I think, Mr. Sher, you took a picture and it shows the sign, so that's in the record as well, so the appropriate notices have been given. The property is a vacant lot, it's on the southeast corner of Twin Ponds Road and Coppermine Road, and it's just under one acre in size, it's in the R40 residential zone. This lot has been around for a long time, it was actually created by a subdivision approval of Town Planning and Zoning Commission back in 1955, and that was almost 20 years prior to the Connecticut State Statute enabling the adoption of wetlands regulations. And in, in the record, you have a delineation report from Eric Davidson, who's a wetland soil scientist, and, and that demonstrates that, I'm guessing now, but over half of this lot is in an inland wetlands, maybe Shannon can go to that sketch, yeah, so the area encompassed by the red outline is, contains inland wetlands soil. So the, the buildable upland soils are to the front of the property, and the wetlands are, are to the rear. The town has carried this as a building lot on the tax rolls for, for all this time, it's currently assessed as a building lot or appraised at $106,000, and Hallary purchased it earlier this year for $85,000. As you can see from that plan up there, it's bounded to the north by a 16 acre parcel that's currently going through the approval process, I think they're in wetlands right now, I think they're proposing 11 or so lots on that parcel to the north. To the west, that property is a 20 acre parcel, it's owned by the Town of Farmington, and that is the Twin Ponds parcel. You can see the more northerly of the two Twin Ponds is almost directly across the street from, from Hallary's parcel. And then to the south, there's a single family home on Twin Ponds Road, it was developed a decade or two back, I guess now, and then also off the screen to the east, there's another single family home on Coppermine Road. We are seeking a variance from the front yard setback regulation, that, that regulation requires a setback of 50 feet in the zone, and maybe Shannon can put her cursor on the front yard line right there, and we're seeking to vary that by moving the, the, the house 25 feet closer to the street line. This variance, this application is really the result of a meeting that Bill and Hallary and I had with Shannon and Bruce Seer back in early July, and at that time, we showed the staff a plan to build this house on a location further back on the lot, which would not have required a variance. It would however have required a wetlands disturbance of approximately 1,000 square feet, and I'm gonna say that we were strongly encouraged by the staff to, to seek your approval of a plan that would create much less of a wetlands disturbance and be more likely to be favorably looked upon by the Inland Wetlands Commission. So the plan before you really does accomplish that goal, the direct wetlands impacts are only 33 square feet on, on this plan. If you approve this plan, we'll then, we'll then seek a wetland permit from that agency. The hardship here is that the lot was created prior to the adoption of inland wetlands regulations, the majority of, the, majority of the lot is in a wetland, and it's really impossible to avoid wetlands impacts without the granting of a variance. Shannon advised us that there was some precedent for the granting of a variance in this, in this situation, I believe within the past year or so, you approved a variance at 8631 Pheasant Hill Road, which was a, a similar situation in that the rear portion of the lot was wetlands, the buildable portion was in the front, and you approved a, a variance from the front yard setback, and allowing the house to be moved closer to the street. I'm also aware, this may predate some of you, that back in 2018, this board approved a side yard variance at 15 Pond Street in order to reduce the wetlands impact for, for a home there. In terms of, of the impact on the neighborhood, I, I don't really think there is any detrimental impact. What's happening here is the house is getting moved 25 feet closer to Twin Ponds Road. The property owner across the street from Twin Ponds Road is the Town of Farmington. The, the house will still be separated from the closest portion of the pond by well over 100 feet and by the, the paved portion of Twin Ponds Road, and we'll be seeking obviously approval from the Inland Wetlands Commission to locate the house in that situation. So that's all I really have for a formal presentation, we'd be happy to answer your questions, thank you.
All right, I'll start with Commissioner Callahan, well, before I, before I do that, I just wanna ask you, are you suggesting that even though you received some advice, let me just, some advice from town staff, they didn't approve this particular proposal that, of the three options that went to your hydrologist?
I don't, I don't think the town staff could approve a proposal, only you can do that, so I'm just telling you how we got here.
Right, and do you know the circumstances, either the Pond Street approval that was near Lake Garda, or the other one you mentioned, whether or not they had either first gotten an in, had filed inland wetlands applications or not?
Shannon might be able to illuminate us on that, I know there was some discussion, I think, but can you help with that, Shannon?
All right, I was just trying to clarify, I'm, I'll save my questions, I go last, so-
Oh, okay.
Let me turn to Commissioner Callahan, please.
Attorney Reeve, do you have any indication as to what the position of the neighbor to the south is with regard to this application?
No.
I don't have any other questions. Commissioner Carrier?
Yes, the, what is the, I don't, with the map in front of us and not having a paper copy, I can't visually scale it, but how much distance do we have from the setback to the edge of the wetlands?
From the-
From the front yard setback.
The front yard setback?
How much buildable area before you're touching the wetlands, that, either the point or the widest point?
Maybe Shannon can put a cursor along the wetlands delineation.
So here's the, here's the front lot line.
Yeah.
Here's the 50 foot front setback, and then there's your nearest point, so you've got, it's about equal distance, maybe 40, somewhere between 40 and 50 feet between the house and the nearest point.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Commissioner Llewellyn.
No questions.
Commissioner Nadine.
I have no additional questions, thank you.
Commissioner Phillips.
No questions.
I have some, could you put up the hydrology report that was submitted as part of this application?
Any particular page?
Um, well, the, there were, I just wanna scroll through the fact that there are, the, as I understand it, Attorney Reeve, there were three proposals that were, that were suggested or at least discussed in this hydrology report, right?
That's correct.
And when I went out there, I saw that no matter which one of these three proposals of the hydrologists, you still have to go to the inland wetlands, right?
That's correct.
And the reason you gave for your hardship is, well, there's wetlands and, you know, this would be less of an impact on the wetlands, that's your claimed hardship, right?
That's correct.
When did your client buy this property, by the way?
In January of 2021.
Just bought it this year.
That's correct.
So when your client bought it, I assume he did know that there were all these wetlands and restrictions and setbacks?
My client's, my client's a she, but-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think she was ignorant of the conditions out there, no.
Right, so the only reason I'm asking those questions is, in the hydrology report, they, the, I forget the name of the individual-
Eric Davidson.
-suggested that if there was a greater impact, they could mitigate the, the damage in a way to the wetlands by actually making the water cleaner, because now it's kind of runoff from Coppermine Road, right? Bring it right on if they're-
He suggested that if, if one of the other options were, were pursued, that would have a more direct wetland impact, he suggested that mitigation would be appropriate in that situation.
And could you explain why you didn't at least go to the inland wetlands agency first, because my recollection is, one of the three properties you mentioned, it was the inland wetlands agency that said, we like this proposal, why don't you go to ZBA and see if they'll approve it, but they gave kind of a preliminary answer that they would be inclined if the ZBA approved it, and that's how it came to us. I'm asking, you know, in, in terms of seeking a hardship, it's not a hardship unless inland wetlands says, you can't do it, right?
We came here based on the recommendation of staff, I don't think they gave us any particular order, they left it up to us, but we, I at least had the very strong feeling that disturbing 1,000 square feet of inland wetlands in this situation would not be looked upon favorably at that commission, and that's been my experience there too.
Well, again, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but we're not experts in the, in hydrology, and we're, we don't usually, right? So my next question is, I can't tell from your application what the size is of this house that you're proposing on this property, it doesn't seem to have square footage.
Can you comment on that, Bill?
William Aston, Buck and Buck Engineers.
I'm sorry, could you say your name and address, please?
Bill Aston, Buck and Buck Engineers, 1000 New Britain Avenue in West Hartford.
Okay.
The house is, main part of the house is 30 by 48, I believe, and the garage is about 30 by 30.
So, let's assume that math isn't my strong suit, so how many square footed, how many square feet is the house itself, and then the-
Footprints of, of the house is, well, 100 plus maybe 900, 2,000 square feet.
So it's about 2,000 square feet?
Yeah.
And the house directly next door to the south is about 4,000 square feet, right?
Footprint is, yeah, well, that's two-story house also.
Well, I'm talking about just the footprint, including the garage, is like 30, I thought, I don't have it in front of me, it's like 38, 3900 square feet, right?
It's, they're approximately same-sized house, there's still on both of them. I don't think the house next door is as big as you're saying.
Assuming, but the problem is, I don't see any picture that shows the proposal here in relation to the house next door, which, the house, house to the south does have a 50-foot setback from the road, right?
That is correct. I think if Shannon can scroll up a little bit, it shows the beginning of the house, right, that's their garage.
Well-
So, in relationship, there's still that long row of edges along the property line, those are evergreen trees, and we're 25 feet from the line, and I believe their house is probably, that's, the driveway is 30 feet, then the turnaround, so it's probably 40 feet from the property line, so 65 feet between the two houses.
But I'm asking about the size of, of the house, you're, you wanna be closer to the road than the house next to you, next, than the house next to you, right? But their house seems to me almost twice the size, right? Proposing.
Our, no, her house is not twice the size of the one next door.
Right.
So, Commissioner, the, from the GIS, the house next door is 31, 38 a living area.
Plus the garage.
Plus the garage, so-
Which is about 700 feet, right?
Well, usually somewhere between five and seven, I don't, I don't have that here.
Yeah.
30 by 48 is 1440, if I do my math in the head right, and usually the second floor is about the same as the first floor, so that puts it in the 2900 square foot, or just underneath what the house next door would be, typical construction.
So, as I, and it's shown on, Shannon, that in the, the GIS shows the house next door, but it doesn't show the footprint of what you wanna build and where you wanna build, right?
It'd be up in this area, I mean, if you take a look.
Right, in other words, I can't compare a footprint based on your, on your site plan drawing to the house next door in terms of size comparison, is my point. In terms of whether it's gonna fit into the neighborhood of that house, the one next to it, versus this one, which is gonna be substantially closer to the edge of Twin Pond, right? The drive, rather. The drive rather.
Unfortunately, I do not know the answers to the exact square footage of the house next door, and it looks like I cut the viewport off. It doesn't show the whole house, unfortunately. But my opinion is that the house is similar to the ones on the street. I actually did this site plan for the one next door.
Can you hold on for a second? There's some
Whoever parked next to the bus up top, you need to move your car, because you need to figure it out to get the students. Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
There was no place else to park. Is it?
It could be your car, too.
It could be my car.
Um, all right, we need to
Gotta go.
Yeah, we have to wait.
Sorry, everybody. You gotta hang on for a second. Uh, you know, these things, you just roll with the bunches. Intermission, ZBA intermission.
Yeah, and since we're still on the record, I'll just say that somebody's blocked in, so that somebody had to move their car, so please take a break.
Mr. Chair, we'll just do a quick, make sure that our, when we come back, make sure our online folks are when we come back on.
Right.
It was the other car that was in the way. So as Secretary, I declare myself absolved of any wrongdoing.
All right, and we're just going to check to make sure that the rest of the board is still on.
Online. So we're just going to check in real quick. If you can just acknowledge with a yes, Sarah Nadine?
I'm still here.
I'm Brockelmann.
I'm on as well.
Rob Phillips.
I'm here.
And Ron Llewellyn.
Yep, I'm here.
Thanks, everyone.
So the other question to have also deal with your hydrology report, this land, wetlands that's currently delineated has a culvert so that where you're putting the driveway has to go to wetlands no matter what, because that water flows under the road at the side of where you want to put your driveway, right?
There's a lot of reasons why we have to go to wetlands, and that's that's one of them.
Right. So all three of your options do require some wetlands disturbance, right?
That's correct.
And I, and I note that, um, and I ask you that the current wetlands, are they based on a recent redesignation, or is it based on current situation where we've gotten a lot more rain and there've been a lot more hundred year floods and and rainstorms just in the last couple of years, the last
The wet, the The wetlands delineation report indicates the date of work was May twenty seventh, twenty twenty one.
Oh, okay. And the the last thing, could you just explain what, if you know, when the hydrologist did say that the other, if it required a greater area of use of the wetlands, how they could actually mitigate that by making the water quality better even than what's draining through there now? Can you explain that?
No, I don't think I can. Can you rephrase it?
Um, yeah, it says, um, hold on just for a second. It says it, and this is the last page. It does say um that options one and two would not likely result in an adverse impact to the wetlands, given its large size and comparison to the relatively small amount of those options were chosen, wetlands mitigation in the form of expanding and enhancing the drainage, swale and culvert should be considered. It would be redesigned to better capture and treat stormwater runoff. Could you just elaborate on that?
I I can't elaborate on that. I would, I would like to just put that portion of the report in some context for the commission, though. He starts out by saying, as a wetland scientist, the standard practice employed with respect to evaluating wetland impacts consists of a three tiered stepwise approach. First tier is that avoidance of wetland impacts is advocated. Then you follow that by minimization, and lastly, where you cannot avoid or minimize, then you go to mitigation. So that's, you know, the third and final uh way to try to avoid wetlands impact, but the preferred method is the one that we are advocating here, which is to reduce the impact to the greatest possible degree by moving the house uh further away from from the wetland. As as to the details of how this mitigation might be accomplished, you know, I can't speak to it, and Bill would have to design something, I think, uh to to do that, or the or the wetland scientist would, but he did not get into that detail in his in his report.
And as I read in here, this this wetlands drains drains directly into a tributary to the farming.
That's correct.
Okay. I have no further questions. Does anybody have any further questions from the commission? Before I ask about uh those which can speak in favor or against? No. We'll do it at, you know, if anybody, well, let's start within the room. Does anyone wish to speak either in favor or opposed to the um the uh application? I see two hands, so whoever's going to speak first. Um, please come up to the podium and um state your name and your address, please, for the record.
My name's Calvin Fredette. I live on eighteen Twin Pond Drive over forty years. Um, two thousand and five when Sunlight Construction built the three houses on Copper Mine and the first house, which is the adjacent to the one they're talking about. I sent several emails. I fought the town about the problem it would cause the wetlands into my house. Now I have three sub pumps in my house because of the previous construction. Because the water table has changed. They eliminated all the trees. They built up the houses. The water just flows back. The town came out, gave me a yip, 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 but they didn't do anything. Now they want to build
For the record, though, since we are recording, but when you you made a sound, you just put those in words for the record, because you know
Oh, well, let's see, I I dealt with Mr. Olandorf, Mrs. Dolphin, uh Russ Arnold. Um, they've all come out. They said they were going to do the culvert at the end of Twin Ponds to get the water to flow. I mean, you can come walk behind my house and it's all swamp. But the water is coming still, and now you want to build another house, which I couldn't believe when somebody bought the lot, because Sunlight Construction had that lot. And I I'm not positive, but I thought the town told them he couldn't build a lot there because of the wetlands. Now, all of a sudden, we're back here again. And you know, I'll be here Wednesday night with the wetlands on the other thing, which is across Twin Ponds. Now, I've been here forty years, living in that house, forty years. I seen the water table change. That's why I'm against even building a house there.
Thank you. Um, does anybody else in the room wish to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Mitchell Scott, eight Twin Ponds Drive. Um, Calvin summed it up pretty well. Um, in my backyard and front yard, um, I have nothing but constant water issues. And every time um it rains, I just get massive water issues, and I also have three sub pumps running constantly. And I'm just afraid that if they build another house there, it's just going to push everything forward back to my house. And it's just going to be a domino effect.
And and I neglected to ask any commissioners if they had any questions of the prior speaker, but this would be the opportunity, if anybody wants to ask any questions of, what's your last name again, sir?
Scott, S U O T T.
And that includes members online. Does anybody have any questions for either of the speakers?
I'll ask Mr. Scott.
Sure.
What is it about you, the construction of a new home? Is it the construction of a new home?
Well, I mean
Clearing of the the trees on the lot or both that you're concerned would exacerbate the water problem?
Correct, exactly. Yep, because I mean, like, behind my house, you can see the water literally just pools up there. And the lot that's empty right now acts as kind of one of those areas to hold the water. I'm afraid that it, I mean, you can see the other houses they built there. They just dumped a bunch of fill. So if they just fill it, I'm afraid everything's just going to keep running down, traveling across.
Okay. Well, I understand the idea is to minimize the impact on the wetland and therefore not fill.
Yeah, but then, I mean, if they're building twenty five feet from the street, that's pretty close. I mean, the road already like floods during heavy rain, so that's not going to give you much room to move anything. Out, in my opinion.
Um, could I just ask, and again, that's just the way of my thought process here. Um, would you feel more comfortable if this was first presented to inland wetlands and it could maybe alleviate any concerns you have about, maybe they would require some kind of mitigation before they asked for uh this variance?
I mean, possibly, but at the same point, I just I mean, there's just water there. If you just try and mitigate it, like, where is it going to go? That's my concern.
Or, Mr. Carrier? Um, are the the issues with the sub pumps and the flooding, is that after rain events or is that in the springtime?
My sub pump runs twenty four seven, whether it rains or not. On heavy rains, I definitely get water in my basement.
And is that, um, do you know at what level the water table is in that area?
Not sure, but it's got to be high, because if you dig down, you will hit water.
So you get, you've had issues both during rain events and springtime?
Yep, even in winter, when snow starts to melt.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak either in favor or against the application? And um Shannon, I'm going to ask whether there's anyone online who wishes to speak.
So if there's anyone online wishing to speak in favor or against the application for the variance for Twin Pond Drive, please raise your hand using the function in Zoom. If it allows you to raise your hand, you'll be acknowledged to then address comments and questions to the commission. And anyone online that's called in to comment regarding this application, raise your hand using the Zoom feature. No, there are no, no hands raised.
Okay. Um, if you'd like to respond, I will give you that opportunity to just make a a brief response presentation, if you wish.
Sure. Uh, I would, with regard to what these gentlemen said, uh, I think that the less disturbance to the wetlands, the better. Uh, it's it's a building lot. At some point, it's going to get built on or the town's going to pay compensation. That's, you you can't take someone's property by virtual regulation. In terms of how to address their concerns, I think the Wetlands Commission is the place where that uh where that would be done, because they have the expertise to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the hearing, and at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion. And I want to put that the motion filed and the affirmative.
So I'll make a motion to approve Hillary Monerat application for variance to reduce front yard setback from fifty to twenty five feet for construction of a new home at lot eight nine eight zero, lot one, Twin Ponds Road, R forty zone.
Second.
All right, discussion. Um, let's just go in order. Commissioner Callahan?
I'm comfortable supporting the application, knowing that this is going to wetlands. And although I appreciate the concerns of the neighbors on the street, I don't it's a wet area. I just don't see any concrete evidence that a house is going to change the water table.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I would agree with those comments, um, but I have a little bit different take on this. Um, you know, unfortunately, these subdivisions got created in the past, and at one point, you know, the wetland statutes were a balance between, you know, economic development and disturbance of wetlands. The only part that I'm hung up on is that the true hardship, which is what our commission sits here and looks at, is the proximity to the wetlands, but they haven't been denied by wetlands yet. So I'm kind of wrestling with the cart before the horse, where if there was a denial of being too close to the wetlands or having to disturb the wetlands and having a denial, then I think I would, you know, fall more on that end, so I I I'm tossed up on it from from that point of view. Um, I, as far as constructing in wet areas, um, you know, obviously, I've I've built a house or two, so I I understand that. Um, my own house, for fact of matter, is I ended up doing it unslabbed for the various, for the sole reason of not having a bucket. Um, but that's, you know, still the a building lot that's approved. They've been paying taxes on it. Um, so it's tough from that regard.
Um, Commissioner Llewellyn?
I support it in in the fact that they're minimizing, you know, the amount of impact to the wetlands.
Commissioner Nadine?
Um, I'm struggling with a similar um issue regarding the hardship, given that they haven't gone to wetlands yet. Um. It just seems to be in a backwards order here, in my opinion, at least for now, but I'm open to hearing what everyone else has to say.
Commissioner Phillips?
Uh, it's a, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, it's a building lot. Um, I think the ZBA has to be true to what their their charge is. Um. You know, I've seen these before. Um. You know, really, the wet, the wetlands concerns are with the Wetlands Commission. Um. I mean, I I can go either way, but I have to say that I I support it.
And I'm just speaking as, you know, go last. Uh, my concern is, um, if the hardship that's listed is that um, you don't know what the inland wetlands commission is going to do. Um, I think that, and and we've done this in the past, it seems that it's more or less our precedent to have them have their say first. We've actually had recommendations from the inland wetlands commission to seek a uh specific type of variance to see if it's granted. So for that reason, um, I don't think we meet the statutory uh definition of a hardship here. I mean, I do agree that there are certain specific conditions of this property that would may would require some kind of variance, but um until the inland wetlands commission uh vetoes it or indicates what they would want, I I feel, uh, not only do I feel uncomfortable approving this uh variance, but I don't think that it meets our basic statutory requirements of a hardship. The second thing I'm concerned about is it's still unclear to me how big this house The second thing I'm concerned about is it's still unclear to me how big this house will be in relation to the house next door. There's no square footage indicated, and there's no comparison, and therefore I have another concern that it won't fit within the. The immediate houses, numbers four and eight, in terms of how they appear in the setback, so I'm going to vote no. But having said that, being the last to speak, I'm going to call the question and ask Shannon if you will call the roll call, please.
Carrie Callahan?
Aye.
John Carrier?
Aye.
Ron Llewellyn?
Aye.
Sarah Nadine?
Nay.
Rob Phillips?
His motion to approve, correct?
Correct.
Aye.
And John Schoenhorn?
Nay.
So I got four, two.
All right, so the application has been approved. And you'll have to now, I guess, go to the inland wetlands commission and make their application there. All right, moving to the next matter, Con Ed Solutions application for variance. To reduce rear yard setback from fifty feet to thirty-one feet for ground mounted solar array. And I'll just state for the record, I had earlier today had. A discussion. With. Assistant Town Planner Rutherford about whether or not this actually falls within the definition of an accessory structure. So I'm going to ask Shannon if you'll just explain why this. Type of array does fall within that definition for the rest of the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I, just a quick thing out of order, but I know that the Ben Court application is still here. We voted to affirm it, so you don't have to hang out here.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're off that one.
Yeah, we don't mind an audience.
It's like live C spin.
Thank you, John, and I'm facing the other way, so thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Commissioner Carrier, okay.
Okay. So with respect to ground mounted solar, it isn't a accessory use on a residential property, so Article four, section two. Applies from an accessory building. And while ground mounted solar isn't listed specifically as an item. There's lots of things that come into play with accessory structures. And it is most like satellite receiving antennas and with respect to. Obviously, it's not an antenna, but electronic equipment and something that. Want, we need larger setbacks to it than, say, accessory shed, which is in section A of that same regulation. So we have historically, there's multiple ground mounted solar applications that we've had in town, and we have applied them both, whether it's. For any residential, it falls as an accessory structure under section D, section Article four, section two D, and that's how we have historically. Addressed these applications.
So would you like to first state your name for the record and your address, and if, and then. We'll listen to your presentation.
Andy Mayshar, M A Y S H A R, three oh nine Mill Road, North Haven, Connecticut. I'm an engineering manager for Con Ed Solutions, and I'm here to speak on behalf of this application.
Proceed, please.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Basically. The hardship here is the fact that there's a huge septic system and leaching field in the backyard of this property. And so fundamentally, this is pretty much the only place we can put the array. The house already has a small solar system on it. And there's, there's no other roofs on the house that are adequate to for a, for a roof mounted solar system. So this, this array is not visible from the neighbors, it's, it's way in the back of the property, there's woods behind it. It's a low slope array, and I actually. This did not go into our application, but.
I think there is a present, that's part of the materials, but that you should probably make that a.
Okay, no, I don't.
Part of the record, I thought that part of the application. I thought I saw a similar array picture in here someplace.
There was a little picture in part of it, but I, that's just the bigger picture showing what a typically low slope array looks like. I mean, I can answer any questions, I don't have an awful lot to say about it other than.
I think that's the picture, John, maybe, Mr. Chair, that you're speaking of.
We're, we're requesting, the, the rear setback for an accessory structure is fifty feet, and we're requesting, I believe, thirty-one feet.
Okay, so let's go through Commissioner Callahan.
Who was installed? Who owns the array?
The array will be owned by, by the homeowner.
Okay, to power the home?
Yes, to power the home, correct.
Is any of the power generated by the array? Is access and going into the grid in general?
Well, basically, the array is what's going to be called net metered. So during the day, when the, when the array is making power, if there's any power being made that's not used by the house, it'll be exported to the grid. That'll, that'll build kilowatt hour credits, so at night, when the array is off, the house will be using those credits.
Okay. This is a deal.
Array counting the array on the house existing is sized to handle the load of the house. It's not designed to sell power.
Understood, but the power is, this is in effect, the owners of the property are paying for this array to be installed in their yard.
Correct, the owners are paying for this array.
Okay, and is this, well.
We are the.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, we're the designer and installer of the array.
Right, and you're in effect selling a product to the customer who is the owner of this house and lot.
We're, we're selling the array to the customer, not the power.
Right, I know, I understand that.
Okay, sorry, I don't.
And then the, the, but the owners of the property are not here to advocate for this project?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
And by the way, the array is going to create very little disturbance. They're actually using what's called ground mount screws, they basically have some poly, they just kind of screw into the ground. There's, other than digging the trench out there, which will be restored and, you know, and grassed over again, there's, there's really no disturbance putting this array in.
All right, how? We've seen the picture, but how far above the ground is the top of the array? I mean, is it six feet tall, twelve feet tall, twenty feet tall?
I.
Five foot eleven?
There is, it, it shows on one of the drawings, I don't.
Yeah, it's on the drawing where there's the picture of what the array would look like, right? I think.
See, that drawing there on the right, I.
Oh, I see it, five eleven.
Five eleven.
Okay, that answers my question, I see it now.
See, that number there now.
Okay, so it slants up from two point six to five, or two feet, six inches to five eleven, I got it.
The, the front edge of the array is just tall enough to keep it out of the snow in the winter.
Makes sense, okay.
Commissioner Carrier? Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Callahan?
No.
Commissioner Carrier?
So I'm, do you have a picture of the front of the house? I'm looking at this, and you stated, if I'm correct, that there's no more room to put. Any solar panels on the actual home itself due to the roof line.
Well, because of the back, the back of the house is available, but it faces north, so it's not.
Understood, but on the south side, which is the front of the house.
There's one very small roof.
It's part of the application.
Perfect, no, no further questions.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
The existing solar array, is that going to remain or is that going to be taken out?
Going to remain.
Okay. No further questions.
No questions.
Commissioner Phillips?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Yes, you stated that this is going to be mounted with screws into the ground. How, how far down do those screws go?
That they go in about, about five to six feet.
Okay, makes sense why it can't be above septic, then, thank, no more questions, am I in?
And Commissioner Walsh?
No questions.
Um, could you, Shannon, could you put up the pictures that I took from the next door neighbor? I do have just a couple of questions about that. This is from the near, the other, could I see the other pic, this is a closer view, there's one that's a little more, two pictures, yeah. If you look at the picture, can you see it, it's behind you as well, sir, closer, if you want to look to behind you, there's a closer view of it. There's a, the tree on the far right side of this image has the tape on it, that's where the actual border is of the property, right? Correct? All right, and does this picture, again, it's taken from the driveway construction of the next door neighbor at two. Mountain Lane, and you're going to have to turn towards the microphone for us to be able to hear you, sir. Can you turn back to the microphone? All right, so my question is, you said it won't be seen by the neighbors, but they're building a house that's actually. Taller than the house of your, your customer there, right? And so they'd see it from their house.
They have some visibility from that.
Okay. And the house isn't finished, it looks like it's under construction, but you know, the, the structure is there, but it does not look like the interior. Has been built, but I'm correct about that, right? And we don't have a picture of that, but the other question I have, if you, if you ask about, if you, first of all, this is a seventy-two foot. Long array, correct?
Okay.
I'm asking, isn't that what you put in here, seventy-one and eleven inches or something?
Sixty-six, seven.
Sorry, sixty-six point seven inches long, right? Sixty-six feet, seven inches long, right?
Yeah, the, the array is purposely set at a low sloped angle, so that it, you know, it doesn't. It's, it's, and it's also a black array, so it's not going to, you know, be too visible, it's not going to be.
No, but I, but I have solar on my roof, and the sun does reflect off of it, right, it's shiny, right?
Right, but remember the, so it's going to reflect a little bit, but the angle of, you know, the angle of reflection equals the angle of incidence, so. There's, I don't believe there's going to be any reflection hitting any houses or. Anything like that.
So, and, and I'll just say, in general, I'm, I'm very much in favor of, of passive. Energy production, so, you know, I, I like this idea. My concern is, you know, any disruption to the neighbors. Is it, have you given any thought to putting in some kind of. Arborvitae or some other bushes along the property line, so it will shield the view of this sixty-seven foot long array. From the neighbors that are coming in next door.
Yeah, we, we could, we, we on quite a few occasions put an Arborvitae. You know, the farther away from the array, the easier it is to block the beauty array. So putting it close to the property line would, would probably work.
Okay, and do you have to take down any of the trees? Because one of these images in your proposal here looks like you're putting the array where it just show is green on your, on the image here. So are you cutting into the tree line in order to put this array?
Actually, I, I'm not sure, if, if it are, it's going to be minimal just to, just, just to get the shade off the array.
No, I understand, and some of the branches, just, you know, I can't be sure, but it looks like, if you look at the photographs and where you're putting it, some of these trees, and of course, it's. Winter when these pictures are taken, some of the branches are going to have to be cut back, otherwise they'll come down on the array, right?
Maybe a little bit, but remember, those trees in most part are on the northern side of the array.
Yeah, but just closer to the property line, right? Rear property.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, you're going to have to at least cut back some of these trees, right?
Potentially, yeah, we'll make sure that there aren't any branches or whatever coming, that'll come down on top of the array.
All right, but in terms of, you have no objection if we were to propose this, if we were to prove this. That in order to shield the view from the neighbors at number two, which. Your lot here shows there's no house, but you'll agree there is a house that's at least. Mostly constructed already, right? To the, I guess that's to the.
No.
This is southern exposure, so we're talking about to the east of this. Property to the view, correct? Number two, which is shown as number two on.
Yeah, the, the question becomes, how, how long a hedge would you want planted, I mean, because. Just, just a view from the actual house, which would probably require, you know, probably four or five Arborvitae.
Well, maybe that's all that would be necessary, it's, like I said, it's trying to do, you're putting in a rather long structure that's going to be very noticeable, at least to that. Property, not necessarily the one below it to the, to the west. Which is number eighteen, I guess, right? So I'm just talking about number two. And putting it along your sloped property line there to act as a protection from the house, maybe. Second floor, but from the first floor. Would that be a problem if we required you, how many are you talking about, four?
No, that, that would be okay.
Okay. I have no further questions, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that has any?
I'll make a note for the record, there's no one else in the council chamber, so there's no live public comment, and I will ask if there's anyone that has called in. To speak regarding this application for the solar array at ten Mountain Lane, to raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You will be acknowledged so that you can address your comments or questions to the commission. And we do have someone that has raised their hand.
And now, sir, I don't know if you're a sir or a member, before you speak, would you please indicate for the record your name and your address?
Hi, this is Elizabeth Witcherly, I'm the owner at two Mountain Lane, Farmington, Connecticut. I just wanted to clarify that the array would, is definitely visible from our home. It would be completely visible from our second story, all of our second story bedrooms, as well as being. Visible from what we are using as our backyard, so completely visible. And we would definitely appreciate, you know, the suggestion of some screening that would definitely be of benefit to us.
Okay, and does anyone on the commission, we'll just quickly go through the. Panel, Commissioner Callahan, you want to ask any questions of, and could you pronounce, is it Witcherly, Witcherly?
It's Witcherly.
No, I.
Like a witch on a broom.
I do.
All right, Commissioner Carrier? No questions. Commissioner Llewellyn?
No questions.
Commissioner Nadine?
No questions.
Commissioner Phillips? Commissioner Phillips?
All right, no questions.
Commissioner Brockelman?
No questions.
Mr. Walsh?
No questions.
And I have no question, all right, does anyone else wish to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? I note there is another. Well, there's Todd, the IT person, but there's at least one other person who's called in, I don't know if that's somebody who wishes to speak. If someone else wishes to speak, would you click the. The raise your hand feature on the call, or if it's a phone, I don't know how you do that.
Looks like a seven oh three area code.
Yeah.
There's still, there's still a, there's a raise your hand or use a chat, if there's a question or comment, there's chat features and Q and A, there's plenty of options to.
That's right.
So if there's anyone else on that wants to comment on an application. Raise your hand or use the chat or Q and A to indicate that you have a question. No, no indication.
No one else has stepped forward, so I'm going to declare the hearing closed, and I'll entertain a motion. Thank, unless, did you want to respond to what Ms. Witcherly said at all before I closed the hearing?
I, I believe, she basically said that there was, there was a view of it, and she was in favor of screening, is that what I heard?
Well, she asked if she, they would be able to, if they would be able to see the. Array from their second floor bedrooms, of course, I don't know where their second floor bedrooms. array from their second floor bedrooms. Of course, I don't know where their second floor bedrooms are, but from the side of the house facing number ten, would they be able to see it?
I, I think blocking the view from a second floor window is rather difficult. Uh, blocking the view from the ground floor in that area is pretty easy.
And from the yard itself, as she.
Yeah. Right, so.
That would be something you'd accommodate, you'd agree to, screening, uh, in conjunction with town, with town, uh, staff?
Yes.
And Shannon, is that something that the town will work with?
We can, we can work with, it'd be easier if a distance or quantity that, you know, otherwise we're.
Maybe during the.
We say five, they say three, you know. Well, I mean.
Well, I would say that maybe you said four to six would, in your opinion, you know, would be sufficient for that, or?
No.
No?
Be more sixty-six feet?
Remember.
Well, no, the length, so that's coming, the length is running parallel to the north property, so it's just the, um, the width of it.
Ah, got too many. This is, this is one of those things that, depending on where you're standing at two.
Well, right.
You're standing, uh, in, you know, parallel or, or towards the end of it in the backyard, then it takes floor to block the end of it. But if you're standing in the front corner by the, you know, on the, let's say, the southeast corner of number two, uh, any screening you put that blocks it there is gonna also gonna block the sun. That's why I always struggle with these.
Well.
I, I would say that, you know, from, if I was to phrase this, I would say proper screening along the property line.
Yeah, I'd do it here.
Oh, yeah. So that way, yes, proper screening along the property line to adequately, I wouldn't say completely block the view, but is that one point to grow in, but to
Obscure.
mitigate or obscure the view.
We can see.
Which, which property line would you be?
The boundary line between two and ten, which is to the, to the east of number ten. Yeah, number two, right, between two and ten. That's right. On, on that property line to a point where, you know, maybe even the screening get applied to the other property so that they have the ability, because nothing keeps the proper, or holds a property owner to not cutting those down three years later when someone else buys the house. So if they're put on, you know, six inches over the property line on number two, then we just say between six and ten, or, you know, to be verified by staff, something like that. I know. All right. You know, you wanna just make the motion then? I can do that. Okay. Pat. Did you wanna say anything else or?
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind. Um, fundamentally, I mean, a ground mounted array is no more unattractive than, than panels on a roof, right? And we don't screen panels on a roof. So I'm just.
Understood. I understand. All right, thank you. I'll close the hearing and I'll entertain a motion. All right. To my agenda here that I had a minute ago. All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the Conidus and Solutions application for variance to reduce the side yard setback, the rear yard setback from fifty to thirty-one feet for ground mounted solar array at ten Mountain Lane R eighty zone, um, with some proper screening of hedges or arborvitae's along the western property line between two and ten, uh, addresses two and ten, uh, to be verified by town staff. And just, is that the western or eastern? So western of two, eastern of ten. Uh, the, the adjoining property. We have a second.
Second. Ron, no, second.
Discussion, Commissioner, it was your motion. Commissioner Carroll, we'll start with you, then we'll move to Mr. Callan. Sorry, no, thank.
I think with the conditions, it's acceptable, and I understand the hardship claim. Surfing, yeah, something. Lower energy is supposed to be a good thing, right?
Right? Commissioner Llewellyn?
Um, I, I support solar. I think it's a great idea. Uh, the screening definitely is necessary. That's all I have.
Commissioner Nadine?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Commissioner Phillips?
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Nothing.
Commissioner Walsh?
Nothing.
And I'll just, uh, state for the record, you know, I'm in favor of this. Um, I did stand on the property, the neighboring property and did, it's higher. Um, so the elevation does go up, so there will need to be some kind of screen. We'll never be able to screen the second uh, floor from the view of the backyard of the neighbor, and at least in my lifetime, even if you plant fast growing trees, so. Um, but to the extent that it will shield it and obscure the array from the neighbor's yard in their first floor, I think that's a good thing. Um, like I said, I have, um, panels on the roof of my house. They are black, but they're glass, and they do reflect light at during certain hours of the day. My, on my side, you know, it's a southerly facing, but, you know, maybe at, in the winter, you can see it, maybe it's sunrise or a sunset. So, um, I would think that some of, some, um, screening would be appropriate, and I'm gonna support the motion as made. Having said that, I'm gonna call the questioner. I have, um, Shannon read the role.
Okay, roll call. Kerry Callahan?
Aye.
John Carrier?
Aye.
Ron Llewellyn?
Aye.
Darren Nadine?
Aye.
Rob Phillips?
Aye.
Don Schoenhorn?
Aye. So, the, uh, application's approved. With the stipulation, you'll have to work with staff regarding that. And, uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for listening, folks.
Okay. And, um, next on the agenda, before we, actually, I didn't. Do you have the agenda?
Yes, there's nothing further on the agenda.
No, that's the notice. There's two things on agenda. One is the, uh.
New, new business legislative changes.
Right. There are a couple of things that, um, I wanted to mention. I think maybe, uh, Shannon, you'll wanna mention as well. There are, the state law has changed so that now if somebody comes in for a variance to allow a what they used to call a mother-in-law apartment, apartment, but now is referred to just as a accessory apartment in the same building. The law in our zoning regs specifically said that it was only permissible if the owner of the property was a relative of the owner of the property. As I understand the change, the person who occupies it, so even if they're a renter, the relative of the occupier can also, uh, live in that accessory apartment, does not have to be an owner. So, um, that's one important thing. The other, as I understand it, is that where before the, uh, character of a neighborhood was considered something that a town could consider, that's now, it's not, as I understand it, and Shannon, maybe you can explain this, because I think it's important to this whole board. It's not completely irrelevant, but it cannot be the principal reason, right? Because the idea is that the character of the neighborhood was always used as a basis to exclude uh, people of more modest, moderate income, which also excluded many people of, of color. So they've made that illegal, I don't wanna call it, I don't wanna use that word. They've changed the statutes that cannot be the main, uh, reason to deny a variance. Am I putting it correctly?
Uh, in, in essence, yes. So the term character has been used in what character means, and as character, the the plantings and the size of the yards and the nature of the architecture, um, and each neighborhood has its own character, and it's looking at the physical attributes and not, um, in such a way that it is not uh, exclusionary. Right? Is really kind of the, the thought process there. So you know, we sent this, the document was included in the, in the package to everyone so that you had an opportunity to, to take a look. John had asked for it. And this is really the latest information that we have. Some of these things do have the accessory dwelling units and the, uh, I wanna say the cannabis, there might be one other one in here, ha- has an opt-out feature, uh, by January first of twenty twenty-three. Um, and we're working with our town attorney to see what modify, what's best for Farmington, really, is, is what it amounts to. And then even with an opt-out, it requires a public hearing with the zoning commission and, uh, I believe also with town council. So, um, these are, you know, our town planner, Catherine Kramer, is looking at these. We're looking at what has to be done. We're looking at what we have options on. Um, and the best approach, we finished our, uh, affordable housing plan that was adopted, and it's been sent to OPM as required, which they just gave us that direction actually in this document, um.
Is there anything in the affordable housing plan that was adopted that we as a zoning board?
Because it's a planning, it's a planning document, just like it is the P O C D. So our next step with that document is to take a look at our regulations and see what from the planning document is appropriate to implement and is readily implementable for Farmington. And some of it is, um, specifically with affordable housing regulations, some of it has to do with the accessory dwelling units. Um, and figuring out what's our best approach to starting to loosen some of those regulations and see, do we wanna go as far as this regulation? And also trying to determine if we do proceed with an opt-out, if there are repercussions to that. Like, what are the requirements? So they've, they've said that there's an opt-out process, but they haven't, uh, outlined if there are consequences for doing so. So until we, you know, can understand that a little better and understand the pro, you know, the process on, on the state level, we're, we see what they're saying as far as it has to be a public hearing on our end, but we wanna make sure that it's appropriate, right? That if we're gonna go down that road, that it's appropriate, and that we're still looking at it and trying to make modifications that will make it a little more flexible than how it's currently worded.
Thank you for that presentation. It makes it clearer for the, anybody have any questions about it? Since, uh, it's gonna be, some of those, the statute's already taken, uh, already taken effect, correct? The changes by the, you know, October first, right?
Typically, it's October first, um, so that's the other thing we're looking, so some of this, the opt-out date doesn't tie into the implementation date, so we're, we're working with Attorney DeCrescenzo on some of these things, because it's, um, not necessarily straightforward with the implementation date on all of these.
All right. Any questions? Anybody? Comments?
Nope.
Okay. And so we still have the, I'm sorry?
There was one, one, uh, piece in there that I read about the education of commission members for
Yes.
E and Z, and that will be required to take an entry level, some kind of educational course, and then uh, continuing every two years after that.
Correct. Correct. And right now, they're, they're intending that they will, they being either CASIO, CCM, Connecticut Bar Association, some group will be putting that together with OPM to establish, it looks as, establish guidelines by January first of twenty twenty-two. And then, um, it says by January first of twenty twenty-four that, uh, commission members will have to comply with the, the training.
So in other words, if you wanna stay on this board, you're gonna have homework.
Well, four hours of training. So what we'd probably do is try to tie it into, uh, meeting night. Right? And try to do it, um, when there's a meeting, or see if there's an online option. But yes, unfortunately, your
Online.
Your, your volun, your volunteer, um, time is now, there'll be an extra four hours in order to have the training completed. Sure.
All right. So last item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, does anyone wanna make a motion with regard to the?
Move to approve the mi, the minutes of the July thousand twenty-one Z B A meeting.
Brockelman seconds.
All right. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
They are approved. So, um, everyone.
I might just say that I abstained because I wasn't present. This is Sarah.
Same here, Rob Phillips.
So I'll also entertain, uh, is next month, we, are we still able to do hybrid meetings, or are we moving, what is the town's rule on that now?
So, um, right now, it's still an option if you folks wanna do it, um, or we can go back to all virtual. TPZ is not moving to hybrid. TPZ is gonna stay virtual. Inland Wetlands, we're gonna be hybrid on Wednesday night because the meeting was noticed that way, but I have a feeling they're going back to virtual. They, they don't have a a desire to come, come back in. They don't wanna be masked. They don't, so we're gonna be virtual, um, for those two boards, um.
Well, let me say this then. Uh, everybody should contact me and I'll just, we'll informally have a poll, and then I'll, before the October meeting, when, when is the deadline for?
So the, the legal notice will be finalized next, next week. So if, uh, we're good either way. I mean, obviously, if we do the hybrid, then there's, it's some additional IT work that needs to be done. Um, virtual, obviously, you're, you're all at home. You're your own IT experts at home, and I just have to, to drive it from here.
All right. So I'll just indicate to all the members, if they feel more strongly about wanting to come in personally, I find it's a little bit easier to talk to some of these applicants and look at everything, but um, I'll have people just contact me maybe in the next week. If you wanna move more to completely virtual, which is, I guess, still allowed, or we'll stay as hybrid, I'm certainly not gonna move in the other direction, requiring people to all be present.
Yeah, we can't at this point. So we can't. So, um, I think the, the regulations and we're back to this in the meetings. So a virtual element had, I believe, were required to, um, maintain until April.
And, and do we at least have some lined up potential, um, applications?
I believe we already have one, and there's a second one.
Okay.
Coming in, right?
So if people wanna contact you just to indicate their preference, you know, let me know if people would rather not come in, I'll consider, you know, I, I, I consult with Shannon before the decision is made, so people let me know. I know Kerry liked to come in, but.
I'm okay with hybrid.
And that's, so, and that's fine. So even if, we can still do, because, uh, Commissioner Callahan, you had come in a couple of times and sat with us, so the chairs, the chairs have, so, uh, Barbara Brenneman always has come in and sat in with us at Board TPZ, so we can still have, um, notice it as virtual, and if somebody wants to join us up, but we'll, we'd probably do it up in the development conference room, because it's just easier from a management standpoint than it is down here. So you're still, well, you know, I can have even two or three additional commission members up there. It's just if we're gonna have the public and the applicants and everyone, then we've gotta be down here.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
We're done. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, everyone. I appreciate your.
Did we make a motion to adjourn? Did we do that or?
Sure.
And I get?
Second.
I think we're done.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night.
All right, thank you.